We got rid of our technical difficulties and we have our flag. Welcome to the regular monthly meeting of the Board of Commissioners held for the purpose of transacting the general business of the township. Today's date is July 12, 2017. This meeting is being held in the Springfield Middle School Library. Please stand and join the Board of Commissioners in a moment of silent reflection honoring the servicemen and women who've placed themselves in harm's way in order to help preserve our Please remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this point, I would entertain a motion dispensing with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting as written and recorded in the official minute book of the township. Do we have a second?
Check it.
Any questions or comments? Home in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Please record unanimous vote. I note that we are in full complement except for Commissioner Graham, who I understand is in Alaska with his church, doing the Lord's good work, so we commend him. Moving on, the next thing we're doing is we're going to call on the Chief of Police, Michael Pitco, and our Magisterial District Justice, Kate McGill, to administer the oath of office to Police Officer Patrick S. Johnson, Jr. Come on down. It's the best thing we do.
All right, well, thank you, Commissioner. Good evening, everybody. I wanted to -- I'm very delighted to introduce our newest police officer, Patrick S. Johnson, Jr. I'll tell you a little bit about him. He took the police officer examination in August of last year. This might be the longest process that we've had to hire a police officer because he enrolled himself in the Montgomery County Community College Municipal Police Academy also in August of last year. And Patrick was an evening cadet student, so he takes actually 11 months to complete the academy, four 11 months, and he just graduated the academy June 28th of this year. A little bit about his military experience, he was a -- served in the United States Army between 2010, 2011, military police officer with the rank of First Lieutenant, and then in 2011 transferred to the U.S. Army Reserve Unit with the rank of Captain. On the education front, graduated 2008 from Penn State University in Abington Township with a bachelor's degree in Business Administration, and he's currently, when he finds the time, he's on an online MBA program with Shippensburg University, so I believe that Patrick will have his master's degree completed by the end of the year. I'd like to recognize the -- all the police officers from Springfield in the audience tonight, and those that cannot make it with us tonight because I'm very proud of the work that they do, they do day in and day out with the job that at times can be very difficult. And Patrick, we wish you a long and hopefully successful career. Lastly, I don't want to leave out his wife Karen because the commitment to be a police officer, especially nowadays, is a very big commitment, trying times, especially in the environment across the country, but it's not only for the police officer himself or herself, but also for the spouse. It's not always difficult to be a spouse of a police officer, so we thank you also.
I, Patrick Johnson.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the township of Springfield.
And the township of Springfield.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a police officer for Springfield Township.
As a police officer for Springfield Township.
And that I will uphold, obey, and enforce.
And that I will uphold, obey, and enforce.
The law without consideration.
The law without consideration.
To a person's race.
To a person's race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap.
Handicap.
Or disability.
Or disability.
I will obey the rules and regulations.
I will obey the rules and regulations.
Policies and procedures.
Policies and procedures.
Governing sworn members of the Springfield Township Police Department.
Governing sworn members of the Springfield Township Police Department.
Also, I will not knowingly accept.
Also, I will not knowingly accept.
Directly or indirectly.
Directly or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable things.
Any money or valuable things.
For performance or nonperformance.
For performance or nonperformance.
Of any act.
Of any act.
Or duty.
Or duty.
Pertaining to my office.
Pertaining to my office.
Other than such compensation.
Other than such compensation.
As may be allowed.
As may be allowed.
By the Board of Commissioners of Springfield Township.
By the Board of Commissioners of Springfield Township.
Congratulations. Congratulations. all the police officers in the back. So now, we're going to move on to the public comment section. The Board is now open to comments or questions from the public. The Board draws particular attention to those items listed on the agenda this evening. Please be advised that once the committee reports begin, the Board can no longer accept questions from the floor. The conclusion of the committee reports, public comments will once again be accepted. However, official action on those issues listed on the agenda will have already taken place. Therefore, if you wish to comment on an agenda item, now would be the appropriate time. And let me just mention that we have the Fair Districts proposal to be voted on tonight, and we asked that people keep their comments to three minutes or less, but we gave them the opportunity to have one person speak for 10 minutes, so we'll have a little bit more letting you and the people in TV land understand what's behind it, because when we actually get to voting on it, it'll happen really fast. Unless some crazy debate breaks out, we'll just read that we're going to do it and we do it. So this was a chance to educate everybody who's here and not here about that, but we're open to any public comment at this point. Go ahead, you can do it from there. Can you get her from there?
I might not be able to hear her.
Oh. Can we push her? You're going to be distorted.
Take that microphone over.
Oh, why? Yeah, well, you can carry the mic to her. We can carry the mic to her. Just, Betsy, this thing on the table is a mic.
See?
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, this is a letter that I wrote to PennDOT for some traffic safety issues. Dear cell, I understand from your response to our speed bump request that they are not an option for that part of Bethlehem Pike. I thought PennDOT stated in a letter that I received that speed bumps are safer for the cars driving over them. I understand now from talking with PennDOT Traffic Safety that neither can be installed because of police and fire trucks and cars needing to drive over them. Can we possibly have rumble strips on the hill entering Erdenhain and in front of Coop Florist? There is a strong need for a timed pedestrian crossing light added to the existing light at Montgomery Avenue. I am in a power wheelchair, and after waiting for the traffic coming off of Montgomery Avenue at a green light, there isn't much time for me to get across. I put the chair on the fastest speed, but it still doesn't allow time for me to make it all the way across. Cars parked on Bethlehem Pike and Brookside Bird make it very hard to exit Brookside Bird, which is a cul-de-sac. There is no other way of exiting. There shouldn't be any parking allowed there at all. This makes for a very dangerous situation. Down at the corner about a street is Coop Florist. I went there myself the other day. As I was in front of the shore on Bethlehem Pike, I was on the sidewalk in my power wheelchair, weighing about 150 pounds, and as the cars drove past me, they were going so fast that it made my heavy wheelchair sway. On a personal note, we live at 15 Brookside Bird. I'm six years old and have MS, and I am confined to a wheelchair. I don't have use of my legs. This is the reason we moved here. Our grandchildren come to visit us often. We often must walk past the area with the grandchildren going to the park. We have to be so careful of the cars driving on the pike. We're always so afraid that the kids may trip and fall into the street. There's only about a one-foot space between sidewalk and the street. There are many children on the street who must go to the area to get picked up by their school bus. They're dropped off in the same area. Due to this extreme safety issue, we need rumble strips installed right in front of the Florist and/or on Bethlehem Pike Hill entering Erdenhain. We all pay an excessive amount of taxes to live here. I feel that my safety is in jeopardy. Unfortunately, MS is taking advantage of control of my legs and my life. Please help with the little things that I have left that I can do. With your help, MS will not stop me from completely doing what I like to do and enjoy taking the grandchildren to the park and/or window shopping on the pike. Another reason these rumble strips are necessary is when you're driving up Brookside Bird and onto Bethlehem Pike, it's almost impossible to dodge the cars coming from both directions, left and right. People speed down the hill into Erdenhain, as do the cars at the length of the corner of Montgomery Avenue and Bethlehem Pike leaving the area. Rumble strips installed on the hill before Gordon Lane slow down the speed when the cars approaching Erdenhain considerably. There are signs posted on Bethlehem Pike and Brookside Road that states no parking between 7:00 a.m. and 9:00 a.m., and also between 4:30 and 6:00 p.m., except Saturday and Sunday. Saturday and Sunday are also busy times. There should be no parking allowed on Bethlehem Pike at all. This is another prime location because of the speeders for death traps. The water inlets are only inches high now because of the pike being resurfaced over the years. That has raised up the street and narrowed the opening on the inlets. Soon, the water will have no place to go but down Brookside Bird. Can you install new flat inlets like those recently installed on Brookside Bird? These are all the things you will see when you come and check out the parking issue. These are the two most important reasons why safety attention is required, walking or driving. Either of these can be life-threatening, and many installation of rumble strips is necessary for safety sake. Don't let death and tragedy be the cause for action.
Great, thank you very much. We discussed this Monday night, and we wrote a letter today to PennDOT asking them to more closely scrutinize and make recommendations, so we'll see how that goes. But thank you. Do we have other public comment? Come on down. Wait a minute. All right. Slide that to the middle again.
To the middle?
Yeah. Perfect.
Good evening, I'm Rita Ford. I live on Glen Circle. You might differ what I'm asking, but items that were on the Monday night agenda are not on tonight's agenda, maybe four or five of them. I wasn't able to attend Monday, may I ask about those items?
You go ahead.
Okay. The Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission, the item says that you were to discuss the desire of the PHRC to execute a memorandum of understanding with the township. Can you fill us in on what that's about?
Well, we have a Human Relations Commission when we pass our ordinance, but it only needs to meet if we actually get a claim. We've never had a claim, and so we're a little odd in that we don't really have anybody on it because there's nothing for them to do, which is a good thing. They want to have meetings and keep track of who's on there, and they want to have the protocols all combined, and we feel that isn't necessary since they've never met and they've never had a quorum appointed, so we decided not to move forward on that because we don't need to create bureaucracy.
Okay.
But I think we're like an annoying checkbox to them because we do have a commission, we just don't have anybody on it, which is, I think, a good thing.
If you have a commission and nobody on it, if there are issues, and typically they're dealing with things of discrimination, so would we be prepared to deal with those claims?
Yeah, here's the way the law's written. If it's only in employment and accommodation, there's the two, so that's housing, public restaurants, and employment. And if you felt, and the state law covers you basically for the whole laundry list except sexual orientation, so it really only boils down to that. So if you get fired because of your sexual orientation, you might have a claim, and that was why we passed the ordinance, because that created the claim. We had the ability to do that. But if you did, then the way our mechanism is set up is each party, you and your employer, would have the chance to say, "I don't want to go to mediation." If you both say, "I want to go to mediation," which is actually pretty unlikely, because if you both wanted to go to mediation, you probably wouldn't sue in the first place, then we would have to find three people. We did appoint two, which might come back. We'd have to create that group, and that group would do non-binding mediation. If either party says, "I don't want to do this, I want my day in court," it would kick up to the common pleas court, and they, that we had generated the cause of action. So it's really unlike, we only had one case brought in the whole time, and that was timely. That was actually very recently, and it was too late.
Okay.
So that's why we didn't want to create an agreement that we might violate by doing something wrong when we don't think we're ever doing anything, and so it's like a whole lot of nothing.
Right, okay, well, as long as we'd be able to respond on a timely basis for those claims, that would be a concern.
And that's all purely substantive, and we don't need them, to the way ours is set up, we don't need them. We would either mediate or not mediate, and then it would be at the court level, and we'd be out of it, and the complainant would have the ability, if they could prove their case, to win or not.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Groundwater monitor well, adjacent to the Luke Oil Gas Station, there was a request to place a monitor. Is there a concern with quality of the water there?
That was, that gas station's, you know, getting torn down and turned into, this is the one in Windmore, getting turned into retail and residential. So it's.
Willow Grove Avenue.
Yeah, Willow Grove Avenue and Windmore. This isn't your one.
Oh, okay.
This is the one up the Willow Grove Avenue.
I was thinking of the other Luke Oil.
That's going away, and whenever a gas station goes away, there's stuff.
You monitor it?
So the EPA, or the DEP's done it, and it's all in the process of being fixed, but what they do is for two years, they'll monitor off the property to make sure, and that's why, since we're the neighbor in the back.
All right, great.
No one will know they're there, and it better be clean.
And then, finally, the vacant lot in White Marsh Township on Bethlehem Pike, is that something?
That's a legacy piece.
It's not ours or its district's, so.
No, no, but we own it.
Oh, we own it?
We own five acres that we had for some access projects that were done with, we paid $15,000 for them years ago for work that needed to be done on the bridge there at Bethlehem Pike, right after you go into White Marsh.
What intersection is?
Right after you've passed the Movie Tavern, that, it's not an intersection, when you cross that, Sunny Brook Creek there.
Okay, so what's the disposition?
There's an animal hospital on the left, and they want to expand their parking lot into our land, and so they discussed perhaps buying, and what we'll probably do is lease it to them, we're looking into that.
And that will go to zoning, I imagine?
No, well, not our zoning, no, there's no, probably no zoning. It's not in Springfield, we're the landowner.
Right, okay.
So what we'll do is we'll get, I don't know what we'll get, probably not a whole lot for something to pay $15,000 for, we'll probably get some rent out of it, and then they'll have to comply with, the issue may be setbacks and whatnot from the creek, but...
Well, thanks for taking the time to explain all those, and if, in the future, I mean, because many times people can't come to both meetings, if this is the official meeting, is there a way these items can be carried over and at least let the?
Well, the matters on the agenda are matters that we act on, so if you have questions, you can either contact any of us outside, or come and do it this way, that's fine.
Okay, all right.
See if we were paying attention on Monday.
Thank you.
Okay, who's next? Go ahead.
Go ahead. Go ahead. Good evening, my name's Joan Schick, I live on Brookside Bird. I wanted to just add one thing to Jane's letter that she read to you. The issues that she talked about really are severe. I mean, every day it is a game of chicken, how fast are they going, are they coming, will it be safe to cut out and turn left? Adding to that is when customers leave the Luke Oil Station and they want to turn left onto Bethlehem Pike, so they're coming out this way.
Right.
We're trying to turn left.
That's true.
I know that the rule is that the person that's on a street has right of way over someone in a parking, you know, private property.
Doesn't get you very far.
But that does not get us very far at all. So if, when you write, or if you already did, I don't know if you can add that to PennDOT's chart.
Okay. One thing we did talk about is because they're expanding the retail area, would we have the ability to put that kind of requirement in there? And the answer is no, because it's not going to, they're not changing the use, they're just increasing it a little bit, and they've got, they've been through their parking battle, as you know.
Right.
So we may not get a chance to put a note, now that would get ignored anyway, I suspect.
Like a no-left turn?
Yeah.
Who, who?
Is that right?
Jeff, yeah, well, that's the thing, they don't have to go to Land Development, which I was trying to clarify with Rob, or maybe they did, but they don't. At the ice cream shop, ESPN Esposito, the new one, there's a no-left there now on that at Hawes Lane, so there's one there now that people bag.
We could ask them, too.
It's on Bethlehem, it's.
They might say, okay, fine, there's a light right there, it's.
It's the same setup, there's a light, there's the parking lot, and then there's the no-left turn out of the parking lot heading south.
Yeah.
This is just down at Montgomery, it's the same, it's the same setup.
Exactly. Who's, is it the property owner that makes that decision, or the township, or PennDOT?
It would be the property owner or the LSC, but can we approach them and ask them?
Yeah.
Because they may not, we'll ask them, but we don't have any ability to compel them, but they may not care.
They do care.
Well, then they'll say no.
I brought it up at the zoning meeting, and they were like, no.
Yeah.
We don't want to do that. So I just wanted to make that point, because that's a big part of that intersection's problem.
Right, and it'll get probably a little worse if there's more traffic coming in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Why don't you go ahead with your commercial?
Well, I first have some preliminary remarks before Mark.
And say your name and address, please.
I will. My name's Elizabeth Wallace, and I live on Pine Road, 7908 Pine Road in Windmore. I just wanted to thank all of you for hearing your constituents so well on Monday night and for considering this very important resolution in regard to anti-gerrymandering. By passing this resolution tonight, the Springfield Township will join 60 resolution-adopting local governments and nine county boards in Pennsylvania. Now, State Representative McCarter can report to his fellow representatives that all of the local governments in his district support the anti-gerrymandering legislation. As you know, the anti-gerrymandering effort by Pennsylvania residents statewide and by Springfield Township residents in particular is uniquely nonpartisan, a truly rare circumstance in these times. As we discussed on Monday night, gerrymandering deprives individual Springfield Township constituents of their right to meaningful representation, hitting constituents in Flowerton and Orland the hardest, and it negatively affects the township as a whole. I just wanted to point out that this petition of 170 signatures, which all the commissioners got on Monday, is now going to Fair Districts PA to join the other petitions from the entire state, and may very well end up in the legislature. We're continuing our efforts individually lobbying the legislature, and we think this is very important to have all local governments and county governments on our side, because this is it. This is the big, this is the big effort. So again, thank you again, and I want to introduce Dr. Mark Schaefer, who is from Fair Districts PA, particularly the Montgomery County Committee of Fair Districts PA, and he's just going to talk to us a bit about gerrymandering, how it affects us, especially in Districts 7 and 13, and what the Supreme Court process is, wherever you want to go.
So first, I want to say thank you very much for this opportunity to speak very briefly tonight, and I'll do my best, this is normally a PowerPoint presentation, but I'll do my best hand signals to explain it. I was very moved by that ceremony just now with the induction of your new police officer. You'll note that he started by swearing an oath to the Constitution of the State of Pennsylvania and to the United States Constitution. I want to read from the Pennsylvania Constitution. "All power is inherent in the people, and all governments are founded on their authority. They have at all times a right to alter or reform their government as they may think proper." That's, excuse me, Article 1 of our Constitution, Declaration of Rights. Also in our Constitution, "Elections shall be free and equal." In our United States Constitution, in five different amendments, "The rights of the citizens of the United States to vote should not be denied or abridged." And for those who need a thesaurus, abridged in this case means reduced or diminished. So democracy is woven into our DNA as a country, and one of the biggest existential threats to that democracy is gerrymandering, especially here within the state of Pennsylvania. Democracy, ideally voters are choosing their legislators. In reality, legislators are choosing their voters. Ideally, every vote should count. Everyone in this room should have an equal voice in their government, but in reality, many votes are completely meaningless. Why is that? Gerrymandered districts. Now, I'm not going to go through an eighth grade civics lesson to explain the details of gerrymandering. You can go to our website, www.fairdistrictspaa, for a more detailed description, but at the high level, gerrymandering is the creation of voting districts for specifically political ends. Again, legislators choosing their voters. There are many terms, cracking and packing, you may hear, cracking where groups of voters are split so that their voices are diluted, or packing, where groups of voters are bundled together so that their voices are, again, focused, concentrated, but then they don't have the influence they might otherwise have. Both are rampant in Pennsylvania and in Montgomery County. If we look at an image of Montgomery County's 7th District, that district is considered among the most gerrymandered in the country and is often referred to as Goofy Kicking Donald, Donald Duck and Goofy, and it affects all of us. Springfield Township is somewhere in the back of Goofy's head. I live in Lower Gwinnett, I find myself attached to Goofy's ear, very, very narrow district lines. How does that affect us in Montgomery County? Well, Montgomery County has about 800,000 voters. The average congressional district is 711, so one would think that Montgomery County should have a single representative, maybe a little bit more. Well, we're both lucky and unlucky. We have five different districts covering Montgomery County, and the difficulty is none of our representatives live in Montgomery County, so in some sense, we have no representation.
I can't hear you because you're not.
I'm sorry. I was trying to address that. So again, none of the, none of the representatives who have a part of Montgomery County actually live here, so Montgomery County has been cracked. Similarly, as was noted earlier, Springfield Township, there are wards that are split between the 7th and the 13th in the middle of wards, which makes it very confusing for voters. Again, I live in Lower Gwinnett where we've got a split right through the middle, think of Lower Gwinnett as a square, right, there's a stripe right through the middle, which is. is the Seventh, and on either side is the Thirteenth. We in fact have six polling districts, and we have four different voting lines, because we, between the split between our congressional and our state representatives, we have different, a real confusing polling issue. And one might wonder why, for instance, District One in Springfield is in District Thirteen in this narrow strip. Well, it was not there to better represent the voters. It's that way because it provides a land bridge to allow District Thirteen to wrap around District Seven. So these were very specifically constructed districts not to engage the will of the voters, but instead to protect legislators. What's the impact on the voting, voting in Pennsylvania? Well, in early 2016, over sixty-five percent of Pennsylvania voters felt that the government was on the wrong track. And in a democracy, one would think that with that kind of dissent, or, well, let's just say, that kind of sentiment, that there would be some change in the government. Well, that year, ninety-two percent of the incumbents ran for reelection, which is not unexpected, incumbents would want to run. Eighty-seven of them ran unopposed in the primary. All right, that may not be unexpected. But fifty-seven ran unopposed in the general election. So sixty-five percent of the people of Pennsylvania were dissatisfied with the government, but fifty-seven percent had no choice in changing that government, all the result of gerrymandering. Pennsylvania is really a purple state, we are generally split across the Commonwealth, about half and half between Democrats and Republicans, yet because of gerrymandering, our congressional representation is thirteen Republicans, semi-Democrats. Now, others have looked at that same map, without changing a single vote, and a single location of any vote, you can redraw the maps to completely flip it the other way. That's the power of mapping. And with the tremendous computer power and the graphical information systems and the information that's available, we all know when we go on the web and we pull up, we go and surf the web, there's always an advertisement on the side, and somehow that advertisement seems to know the last thing you bought. The same's true for your voting record. That information is out there exactly how you're going to vote, and that's used now very comprehensively to set up these maps. Gerrymandering is at the heart of the cronyism, and is at heart of the inability of government to really serve its needs. No matter what your particular issue is, whether it's open space, voting rights, tax reform, balanced budget, education funding, because of gerrymandering, your voices aren't heard. What we are proposing with Fair Districts PA is to reform the system and produce an independent citizens' commission. Not that they are all independents, as in not Republicans, not Democrats, but one that is independent of political influence, in that they are not members of, they have no connection to existing legislators, either former legislators, employees, spouses, they're not beholden to any political office. And a diverse representation within eleven-member commission, four from the majority party, four from the next party registration, and three independents. So there's a great, a better mix of representation within that commission. And all votes require a supermajority of seven, with one vote from each group. Again, trying to get as balanced and as open and as fair a process as possible. No system is perfect, but this is a system model after what was done in California, where there was a great push against gerrymandering. I would all recommend you Google Schwarzenegger gerrymandering for a good explanation of this. And the goal is to produce open and fair elections that better represent the voice of the people. We are in a tight timeline. Under the Pennsylvania Constitution, once again, in order to change the Constitution, legislation has to be passed in a single session, then passed again in the following session, legislative session, and then go to a referendum statewide. Based on that, we have to pass this legislation in this current legislative session, which ends July of next, ends one year from today, then reintroduce it, have it pass again, and hopefully be on the ballot by 2020. The time is short, there's a great deal of work that needs to be done. And our goal is first voter education, and then, again, municipal resolutions, which again, we appreciate your support on that, in that effort, so that we can then go to our legislators. And again, let's be clear, these are people who have a vested interest in keeping their jobs. If we had the ability, we'd all like to write legislation that kept us in our positions. So there's a great deal of momentum that we have to inertia, I should say, come. But we have a great deal of momentum on our side, the ground's full of support from people has been quite heartening. So, in summary, I again, thank you very much. I commend everyone to go to the Fair Districts website if you're interested. It's my plug to the camera. If anyone's interested in this, please go to our website and join, sign up, so that we can keep you, oh, look at this. So that we can keep people informed and called to action when we need you to go to your state representative or senator and let them know your feeling. There's also Montgomery County Facebook page to find out about local resolution activity. And if you send us an email, we'll be happy to put you to work if you feel so motivated. Again, thank you very much for your time. I do have a few copies of the basic PowerPoint that I was kind of going through briefly. If that could be put into the record, that's your call.
And the other thing is, we're always interested in speaking. There's a Speaker's Bureau with the Fair Districts PA, and if you want us to talk in an event of yours, or to a group, we're willing to do it. So it's just to... But for the audience, we have these little pieces of paper with the contact information for Fair Districts PA. We have a summary of the legislation, redistricting legislation, that is pending the legislature right now, so pick that up if you feel like it. And we also have a sign-in sheet, just in case you want us to know how to get hold of you if you want to volunteer. Thanks.
Great, thank you.
Thank you again.
And do we have any other public comment at this time? Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, my name is Tom Smith, I live in Orland in Ward Three Two. I'd just like to commend the commissioners for what they did on Monday night. I thought it was exemplary in that we had a general open discussion, and the commissioner, the chief commissioner was able to find a way to soothe his conscience so he could agree with this. I'd particularly like to commend Mike Maxwell for speaking up forthrightly at the end of the discussion. So thank you all very much.
Did we have one more in the back? Come on down.
I may not need to make my comments, if I can clarify on yours, have you all decided you're going to vote in favor of the gerrymandering?
We're not allowed to say that, but yes.
Okay, well, then I will speak very briefly and just say, so my name is Ellen Badger, I live on Brookside Road. I am a registered indep, not registered independent, I don't know what I am, but I've never gotten involved in any kind of politics before. And a few months ago, I found myself at this giant gerrymandering meeting to find out what this was all about. And for me, it's the one thing that I've felt is really important to speak up about as a citizen, because it affects every single one of us. It's not about taking sides, it's about really finding a way for us all to be able to participate in our democracy, and I can't think of any single person I know who can't support that. So for me, it's an exception to my own role to be speaking out about this, and I was, came here tonight to urge you to make an exception to your role, not getting involved in politics. So I hope you'll all be voting in favor of this.
Stay active. Okay, last chance, anybody? Okay, we will move on. So now we'll move to the committee reports, and I will, we're going to be a little bit out of order here because of the way we've assigned them. I think you'll be able to follow us. I will start off as the chairman of the Internal Affairs Committee with item two on the agenda, the bill listing. I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the June check reconciliation in the amount of one million, five hundred and sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars and seven cents in the July bill listing, in the amount of one million, four hundred and sixty-five thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars. That is my motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And then, at this point, Mike, I'm going to call on you as, even though I usually at the end, as the co-chair of the Public Safety Committee, because you have the shade tree one, right?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Board of Commissioners reappoint Tom Prisblinsky and Ken Ferguson to new three-year terms of service. As members of the Springfield Township Shade Tree Commission, the new terms of service shall expire July thirteenth, 2020. That is my motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
That concludes my report for this evening.
Please record a unanimous vote. Okay, now we're back to me, and this is the one you've been waiting for. This is Resolution Number fourteen thirty-one, and we're a fancy filing system here, so don't blink. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution Number fourteen thirty-one, a resolution in support of the Commonwealth, creating a citizens' commission for legislative and congressional redistricting following the 2020 census. That is my motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Yes, I just have a few briefly. And I apologize to the group, I was at a baseball game with my son on Monday night, so I missed the discussion, but my colleagues filled me in. I also had the opportunity over the last two months to speak with a couple of residents and had a variety of emails that were back and forth with folks about this. I will be voting in favor of the resolution. However, I would be remiss if I didn't say that, first of all, I think the thirteenth congressional district should have one congressperson. It's going to be one point two-five, or each, that in Philadelphia will have more than one, so, whether they have to be contiguous and whatnot, but I'll say something, you know, bipartisan or however you say it. When Allison Schwartz was our congressperson in this area, she was very receptive to phone calls, I think our commissioners would agree to that, especially for the ward that I represent, and I would say Ward Three as well. Congressman Mann, who represents, whatever you feel about how the Seventh was drawn up, was very receptive with his office with the tank car property. We had an EPA site, seven acres of open space that we were acquiring, and their office was outstanding with helping us get through the bureaucracy, helping us get through a four and a half million dollar lien, that is not the responsibility of the township now, in order to get seven acres of open space, which you mentioned, for parking recreation. So they have served us. Talking to Jeff back and forth about this, we do have two congress folks, and sometimes it does get confusing. And what I've, what I've experienced is that if it's their contacting Representative Boyle's office from my district, they get a response, and they do get assistance, they don't just say, and vice versa. So they have been receptive, just to give some positive to how, at least the representation has been thus far. My other question to, well, statement is I also think this has to be at the legislative level as well, because we all know in this room, the two legislative districts are really not contested. It's four to one, three to one each time, and the thirteenth congressional district last time had no opponent, which other six hundred and forty-nine thousand people, there was not one opponent. And that, for whatever reason, so, I'm actually the only one that's going to be contested this time, looks around, maybe the seventh congressional district, ironically, so, but I do agree, and two other things. If the legislators could also think about on the county level, we have three county commissioners, some outstanding commissioners, right Jeff?
Thank you.
I, there's actually some progress going to need now to expand that from three to five to seven, to be more representative of the county, because if you have three county commissioners that only represent the east, the west may be neglected, vice versa, or somewhere in between. And also at the local level, I would ask maybe that the legislators would look at, for instance, areas that don't have a ward system. And we just went through this last few months of White Marsh. We have a section right next to my district, where there's a Super Wawa coming in, and there's a traffic study going on, and the White Marsh residents are coming to these meetings, because they have not, they have an at-large system, and nobody lives over there. So I'd ask your group to maybe look at that a little bit. In our ward system, we're responsible for these areas, and we're accountable to these areas for our individual wards. And it makes us work, and it should. Over there, and we've had this room packed two months ago, with all White Marsh residents are coming for us, Rob, for the Super Wawa, which we passed a resolution to oppose a Super Wawa in White Marsh. And I was at a meeting with three hundred people, and not one representative stood up and was there. Okay, so they came here, and the same thing for the traffic state. We want, we want their help, their staff at White Marsh is great, and not disparaging any of them, but they're set up as an at-large system, so I was wondering if, I understand where the federal and the legislative, but I also ask you to look, or at least give recommendations or some incentives for the local and county to think along the same lines as well. Those would be my comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions or comments? Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. Great, thank you. Secondly, I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution fourteen thirty, a resolution confirming to the P A D E P that Squires Ridge and the Atria Senior Living Facility are compliant with the Township zoning and related municipal ordinances related to a sanitary sewer planning module application to the P A D E P. That's my motion. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Great, thank you. Secondly, I move that the Board of Commissioners award a contract to asphalt paving solutions of Hamilton, New Jersey, to provide a micro-surfacing treatment to three township streets for their bid price of two dollars and ninety-nine cents per square yard, for the type A micro-surface double application, for a price not to exceed thirty-seven thousand, seventy-six dollars. The streets to receive the treatment are Mermaid Lane between Cheltenham Avenue and Queen Street, Sandy Hill Road between Church Road and Willow Grove Avenue, and Aaron Ford Road between Loraine Avenue and Roche Avenue. The project was bid by Whitpain Township on behalf of the Montgomery County Consortium of Communities, of which Springfield Township is a participating member. That's my motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments on the motion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
President, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Shum. We move to the Chairman of the Community Development Committee, Commissioner Standish.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have no report this evening.
Thank you. And now we move to the Chairman of the Zoning Committee, Commissioner Daly, who will also give Commissioner Graham's Human Resources Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following zoning hearing petitions will be heard on Monday, July seventeenth, seven p.m., and here in the Springfield Middle School Library. The first is Lorenz Properties LLC, one seventy-five Roberts Road, Glen Side, is seeking a special exemption to allow a multiple dwelling use and a variance to reduce minimum lot area per family for multiple dwelling from five thousand square feet to thirty-five hundred and fifty square feet for a property at four hundred Bethlehem Pike, Erdenheim. The zoning relief will allow the redevelopment of this property from two apartments with a single square, to twenty-four hundred and forty square foot office into four apartments. The second petition is Jacob and Michael Bevan, five five nine East Evergreen Avenue, Windmore, are requesting a variance to reduce the side yard setback for their shed from fifteen feet to eight feet as an accessory building to their dwelling. With respect to petition number one, the Lorenz property, is my understanding that they have requested a continuance. However, I don't, has that been granted, has not been yet granted from the zoning hearing board?
No, there hasn't been any action yet.
So if anybody's watching this, notices would go out, or keep, contact the zoning hearing officer to see if that has been continued. And with respect to petition...
Now, just point out, the website, Jen, if you're interested in that Lorenz issue, check the website before you go to the meeting in a couple weeks, because it's probably not going to be at that meeting. Sorry.
Would a NEBlast go out, canceling it?
Do we, only if you're on the zoning list, right, or?
Well, yeah. Yeah. You'll put a general... If you're NEBlast out and you're interested in all issues...
Excuse me, Jeff, isn't the Lorenz hearing this Monday?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
Yeah, that would be.
Yeah.
So check before that.
Not two weeks, yeah.
But we just heard from them today.
Yes.
They want to delay it.
Well, they do want...
But we have to actually, the zoning board has to grant the delay, so it's likely to get delayed. It's pretty odd why they wouldn't grant.
Well, continue with the report. With respect to number, petition number one, Lorenz property, that the Board of Commissioners has previously authorized, the Office of Township solicited to represent the interest of the Board of Commissioners in opposition to the application as it relates to the property. The opposition by the Board stands for the conversion of the existing building to uses in excess of three apartment units. That would be my report for zoning. I have one motion. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution fourteen thirty-three, a resolution renaming Orland Park on Orland Mill Road, Orland, to Henry R. Chiarmanti Children's Park, in memory of Henry Chiarmanti. The motion, I will read the motion. Whereas in two thousand and ten, the Springfield Township constructed a totlot area on Orland Mill Road as part of a project known as the Orland Mill Drainage Project. And whereas the totlot park area was constructed to allow families with small children to enjoy open space and recreation in the community. And whereas the totlot park area was originally designated as Orland Park... And whereas the totlot park area was constructed to allow families with small children to enjoy open space and recreation in the community. And whereas the totlot park area was originally designated as Orland Park, whereas the totlot park area has since become an asset to the Springfield Township community, has been enjoyed by families and children, and has been a place for families and children to meet new friends. Whereas on July 3, 2015, Colleen and Matthew Chiarmanti moved into their new home at 303 Orland Mill Road across the street from the totlot park area. And whereas on July 4, 2015, Henry R. Chiarmanti was born to Colleen and Matt. And whereas while Henry grew, while as Henry grew, on most days, he would go to the totlot with his parents to play, usually after a nap. And whereas Henry met with many new friends at the totlot, one of which was a neighborhood friend named Lily. And whereas at the totlot, Henry's favorite games to play with his friend would be tag, school bus, and where the two friends would hold hands as they came down the sliding board together. Whereas Henry thoroughly enjoyed the totlot park area and would wave every time he passed by. And whereas Henry sadly passed away on April 10, 2017, from sudden unexpected death in childhood, or S U D C. Now therefore, it be resolved to allow Henry's legacy of friendship and happiness to continue and to bring awareness of sudden unexpected death in children to other Springfield Township community families. The Board of Commissioners of Springfield Township, Montgomery County hereby renames the totlot area on Orland Mill Road as Henry R. Chiarmanti Children's Park. That would be my motion.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Please record unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. That would complete my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Daly. Finally, I turn to the Chairman of the Cultural Resources Committee, Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. President. On the recycling report, I'm pleased to announce that during the month of June 2017, Springfield Township residents recycled 200 tons of materials with a household participation rate of 84.3 percent. The net cost for the month was $17,011.49. Should I continue?
Yes.
Is my environmental? Okay. Environmental Advisory Commission membership report. I move that the Board of Commissioners appoint Michael Needleman of Frazier Road, Erdenheim, to fill an unexpired term of service as a member of the Springfield Township Environmental Advisory Commission. The unexpired term of service shall expire June 14, 2014. Mr. Needleman is currently serving...
Wait, wait, wait.
2018, I'm sorry. Mr. Needleman is currently serving as an associate member of the Environmental Advisory Commission. That is my motion.
What are we, are we going to have a separate motion for the other guy, or? Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Please record unanimous vote.
My second motion is I move the Board of Commissioners appoint William Constant of Poplar Road, Flower Town, to serve as an associate member of the Springfield Township Environmental Advisory Commission. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Please record unanimous vote.
My final action is Resolution Number 1432. I move the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution Number 1432, a resolution requesting recognition of Springfield Township as an Audubon Bird Town and authorizing the township staff to make application, application to be an Audubon Bird Town community. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Please record unanimous vote.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. That concludes our committee reports. We are now open to any public comment, if anybody so wishes. If not, I would be willing, oop, go ahead. I don't have a gavel up here on the screen.
I'm Matt Chiarmanti. My wife, Colleen, back there, we live on Orland Mill Road. I just wanted to thank you all for what you just did. I know it was probably quick and painless for you guys, but it's very important to us, and I'm very, very thankful, specifically to Jim, he's been very, very helpful. He's been working with my father-in-law, who put in contact by our neighbors. Our neighbors are fantastic. This is a great community to be in, and I'm very, very thankful and happy that you guys passed this resolution. That was all I had to say.